Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, sir.
It's a beautiful spring day here in Denton County. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, April the 18th, 2023 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're excited to have you all here. We've got a great crowd. At this time, I'd like to welcome forward for our invocation, our Sheriff Tracy Murfree, and our pledges will be led by Civil Air Patrol Cadet Captain John Rosenfeld. And if you'll please stand, I want to remind everybody, please turn off your cell phones.
Thank you. Will you pray with me? Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, first of all, God, just thank you. Thank you for another day, another opportunity, another opportunity at life and this gift that you've given us. Father, we thank you for your many blessings and for allowing us to live in this wonderful country and in this wonderful state, and particularly in this wonderful county. Father, we ask for your continued grace, and we ask, Father, that you would give us the ability to show grace for others as you've shown grace to us. Father, I ask for your intervention in the spiritual battle that's taking place in our country. Father, I ask you to bless the hearts and the minds of our leaders. And Father, that you would intervene and that they would go to your will, Father, and understand that our hope is in you and not in politicians and not in government. Father, I especially today want to lift up Judge Eads, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Falconer, Commissioner Mitchell, Commissioner Edmondson, that you would bless them, Father, and that you would guide them and that they would seek your guidance in the important decisions they have to make for our county and our families. Father, I ask you to bless everyone in this room, Father, and give them safe passage when they leave and to bless their families. In all this, I ask in your name, Father. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Well, thank you, Sheriff, and thank you, John, for doing that. At this time, I'd like to go to item one on our agenda, which is public input for items not listed on the agenda. And we do have one individual registered for public comment. That's Mr. Willie Hutsmith. Mr. Hutsmith? Where is he?
Oh, there he is. Oh, there he is.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Judge and Commissioners, my name is Willie Hutsmith. I live at 623 Newton. I'm here today to talk to you again about the the citizens at St. John Cemetery in Pala Point. They don't have a voice. You sit there as their voice, but your voice has been silent for almost two years. You have said nothing. Well, maybe that's the way you govern. There are forty-five to fifty citizens at that cemetery. Fifty of them are children. I'll bet you've never been out there. Well, that's just what their voice has for them, you five. There is one that I found. God bless me. One person. It's mysterious as to why they left. We suspect the Klan ran them out. Whatever the reason, no one should be treated like they are treated. I want that gentleman to come here. He's feeble like me. But I want him to come and tell you what he thinks about the way you're treating them. You have the wherewithal to take care of that cemetery. You have, to give your credit, done something. We want a way to get to it. It's landlocked. The county has allowed them to bow the land around it, so you can't get in there unless the owners let you. There is no marker to determine what the boundaries are. You allow that to happen, your county, or my county. So I'm here telling you, you need to do something about that. Or maybe not. Maybe this is the way we should go. Say nothing. Do nothing. Let those citizens, including those children, just wither away. That's what they're doing. Well, maybe one day we'll get some commissioners up there who will do something. What have you done? Nothing. You've said nothing. You've done nothing. You've kept the money for yourself. Oh, no, you didn't. You built this beautiful place for yourselves. What have you built for them? You've weed-eated the grass. That's what you've done. Well, I'll be back Tuesday to remind you of what you've done or what you haven't done.
Thank you, sir.
Your experience status is good. Thank you. For those who may be watching, we're limited on our comments for public comment forums, so I just wanted to let you all know that sort of we're not being disrespectful. Mr. Hutsmith, we're limited on our comments in response. Okay, let's proceed forward on our agenda. Let's go to item 3A, which is approval of a court proclamation recognizing Civil Air Patrol Cadet Captain John Rosenfeld in any appropriate action. I know that Commissioner Williams had wanted to bring this item forward. Do you have any opening comments, sir? And I would welcome John back up here if you'd like to. Where is he?
No, thank you, Judge. Appreciate you guys allowing this to happen today for this wonderful young man, and I look forward to listening to what we've put together for him.
All right, good. All right, John, welcome back. I'd like to read this court proclamation in your honor. So this is a court proclamation recognizing Civil Air Patrol Cadet Captain John Rosenfeld. And whereas the Civil Air Patrol was founded in 1941 for young adults ages 12 to 21 with a three-pronged focus of cadet programs, emergency services, and aerospace education. Whereas John Rosenfeld has been involved with the Civil Air Patrol since November of 2018 and has served on cadet staff for Nighthawk Composite Squadron for the last three years, holding various positions, including First Sergeant and Cadet Commander. And whereas he was recently promoted to Cadet Captain of the Nighthawk Composite Squadron SWRTX-413 here in Denton. And whereas John Rosenfeld is one of an estimated 3% of cadets who have received the prestigious Amelia Earhart Award, which recognizes sustained excellence in all four areas of cadet life, which is leadership, aerospace, fitness, and character. Whereas he will lead and serve junior raking cadets, not just in his hometown squadron, but around the state of Texas. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court would like to congratulate Civil Air Patrol Cadet Captain John Rosenfeld with the Nighthawk Composite Squadron for his outstanding achievements. Denton County is fortunate to have someone of his caliber as a leader, and we look forward to his future accomplishments. Absolutely done in open court. This is the 18th day of April 2023 upon a motion made by
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? Would John, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Judge.
John, tell us, what are your career plans?
Well, at the moment, I have a busy year planned out with various Civil Air Patrol activities. This fall, I hope to either apply for a service academy or potentially attend a college online and possibly later commission as an officer in the Air Force or Navy.
Well, that doesn't surprise me at all. I want to thank you for your willingness to serve the public, answering the call to public service. I want to thank you for doing that at such a young age. We always need that next generation looking forward. So if we can ever write any letters of assistance on your application for the academies, just let us know. We'd love to support you.
Yes, sir. That would be greatly appreciated.
All right, perfect. All right, any other comments? All right, thank you. All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
All right, we'll do one, a quick one. All right, let's get the cheering section involved.
These are my siblings.
Couldn't do without the family.
These are other cadets.
Oh, other cadets. Can we all fit in? There's room over here. Come on over here, buddy. Up here. There you go.
I finally found someone I'm taller than.
Congratulations to my nephew.
Well, John is not the only one in uniform this morning. We have some next special guests that are in colonial attire. So I'd like to go to item 3B, which is approval of a proclamation recognizing April the 19th, 2023 as Patriots' Day. And we have several people, individuals with us today, if y'all want to come on down. And Jim Akers is president of the Denton Chapter of the Sons of the American Revolution. And Jim, if you'd like to come speak, and we have several individuals that are in colonial uniform, Christopher Strauss, David Cook, and Tom Richards. And Mr. Richards is a direct descendant of William Dawes, the American patriot who rode with Paul Revere. So and we also have representatives of the Denton Daughters of the American Revolution. That's a great group. I've spoken to them before, so good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge. I would like to introduce Andy Tart, who is the Regent of the Flower Mound Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And the Vice Regent, Sonora Smith, is also with her. As you know, the Battle of Lexington and Concord occurred on April 19th of 1775, and that is regarded as pretty much the start of the American Revolution. The Colonials were victorious in that, in driving the British back to Boston to where they could seek the protection of the cannons, the British ships that were in the harbor. Dr. Richards' ancestor, William Dawes, took the land route. Paul Revere took the sea route, and they met in Lexington. And I'd also point out that Mr. Dawes was the only one of the three riders on that night that was not captured. So Tom is one of our favorite members. Thank you, Judge.
And he's very proud of that fact as well, I'm sure. Well, great. Well, we're glad to have all of y'all here today. So is there any other comments anyone would like to make from the Daughters or anyone? Okay, all right. So this is a court proclamation recognizing Patriots' Day in Denton County, whereas April the 19th marks the date in 1775 where the towns of Lexington and Concord, Massachusetts, were marched upon by the British regulars in an attempt to confiscate militias of the local militia. And whereas on April the 18th and April 19th, 1775, Paul Revere and Samuel Prescott rode with William Dawes to spread the alarm. Whereas the resulting shot heard round the world and the defeat of the redcoats are now celebrated as Patriots' Day. Whereas Patriots' Day serves to remind citizens of our revolution and the sacrifices endured during the years of struggle for American independence by patriots such as William Dawes. And whereas the descendants of the soldiers and patriots who fought in the American Revolution encourage the community to proclaim April the 19th of each year as Patriots' Day in commemoration of the American Revolution and the struggle for American independence. And now, therefore, be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim April the 19th, 2023, as Patriots' Day in Denton County. And we call upon all citizens to participate in Patriots' Day by becoming more knowledgeable of the role that the American Revolutionary War played in establishing the United States of America. Done in open court, this is the 18th day of April 2023, upon a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any comments? Well, thank y'all for being here and for reminding us of those early heroes here in the United States that helped create this great country, which I believe is the very best in the world. So thank y'all. Thank you. And what a great legacy each one of y'all have. You wouldn't be a member of the group if you did not have ancestors as part of that. And so thank you for the long, rich legacy that your families have had here in the United States and here in Texas and Denton County. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes.
We do have some activities coming up. Next Saturday, in fact, is the Medal of Honor Parade in Gainesville, and many of us intend to be there. And then, of course, we're looking forward to Independence Day and the celebrations that occur there. We're also presenting awards at most of the Denton area high schools
Oh, good.
during this week. Anyway, and also the UNT Air Force, University of North Texas Air Force, and Army ROTC brigades will be receiving awards.
Excellent.
Judge, I want to thank you for the good information that you put out about the Medal of Honor motorcade. And I believe Constable Fletcher will be leading from DFW Airport clear to Gainesville, and that'll be on Wednesday, if I remember correctly. So I hope a lot of us will stand out with our American flags and welcome those heroes. And thanks to y'all for representing your background, which includes American heroes. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all.
Okay, let's go back here.
All right, one, two, and three.
All right. Next, we have a presentation of the distribution of 11 Patriot Minuteman 3 Bullet-Resistant Shields, NIJ Level 3 Protection Rated, to stop Shields, NIJ Level 3 Protection Rated, to stop lead-core rifle ammunition, to the Denton County Sheriff's Office and the Fire Marshal in the Constable Precincts 1, 2, 4, and 6, and any appropriate action. And Rena Maloney, Denton County's grant manager, is here, and she's done a great job working on this grant. And Rena, before you start, I just wanted to start out by saying thank you for, for all your, your good efforts on getting these different agencies here in the county, these protective gear. So, go right ahead.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. So, I'm so thankful to be here today that we accepted this grant in January, that's funded through the Office of the Governor, where Governor Greg Abbott allotted $50 million to provide bulletproof.
Mic over a little bit.
Oh, sorry, Judge.
There we go.
Bullet-resistant shields to give law enforcement agencies and officers expanded access to critical protective equipment. So, back in January, we accepted the funds for this and placed our order. We were awarded a little over $42,000 to provide for the purchase of the 11 shields, and we're so grateful and thankful for our partners in Denton County that worked on this grant with us and provided all the information that we needed to be able to submit a successful application. So, that we worked with the Sheriff's Office, the Fire Marshal, Constable Precinct 1, 2, 4, and 6. And with these shields, we're going to be able to allow for expanded protection over all 953 square miles of Denton County, allow our law enforcement officers to respond to after shooter situations, and to provide support to any of the 40 law enforcement agencies across Denton County. And these will also help to ensure officer safety when they are involved in these situations. So, I believe that we have a representative from all of our departments today that are participating in the shield, if they want to come up.
We do. Gentlemen, if y'all want to come forward, and Sheriff, did you want to say anything? Or Constable, did you, you are welcome to make any comments.
First of all, thank you for working on that. I know these grants aren't, as you guys know, aren't easy to put together, it's another government thing, but we do appreciate it. We appreciate this court and the county's support of law enforcement and everything we do, and I, I'm very hopeful that we never have to use these, so thank you.
Absolutely, hopefully they'll gather dust. All right. Danny, did you want to say?
Just want to reiterate what Tracy said, he usually gets bigger applause, so.
That's okay. All right, well, we will, I will go ahead and make a motion to accept these, and then we'll do the officially accepted, we have a motion by the Chair, do we have a?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams, any other comments? Rena, thank you again for all, all your efforts, and I want to thank the agencies for y'all's acceptance of these, and willing, and it takes both parties to, to be in conjunction with this, so. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and we're going to take a quick picture with the shield, we got a shield down here.
Sheriff's going to hold it? Sheriff's going to hold the shield?
One, two. I'm sorry, we don't need Kleenex in here, Father. One, two.
Oh, good. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you, sir. We'll see you again. Yes. Thanks, brother. Yes, sir, of course.
All right. Next, we'll go to item 3D. And Pam, if you want to make your way down, we got a, item 3D is approval of a proclamation recognizing April as Autism Acceptance Month and any appropriate action. And we got Pam Gutierrez here, and several friends and family members that are here, and I know we'll take a big group picture, we'd love to have, if you're here for this item, we'd love to have y'all come down and show your support. For Autism Acceptance Month.
Huge group.
Big crowd.
Yeah.
We got a big crowd.
Emptyed out our seats.
We have some family members with us, too.
I think that's awesome.
I wanted Katie to come up, and I have some board members with me. Thank you, Commissioners and Judge, for recognizing Autism Month and acceptance of this. It's very, very important to us. You can see all the staff that are here, our board members, and we thank you, as always, for recognizing this. Judge, after you read the proclamation, we have something we'd like to say as well.
Perfect, we would love to, just some comments.
Thank you.
We'd love to hear from y'all. So, I'll go ahead and read, this is a court proclamation recognizing Autism Acceptance Month, and whereas the Autism Society of America launched its first national effort to promote autism awareness in 1972, in a sense evolved its efforts into Autism Acceptance Month, with this year's campaign entitled "Celebrate Differences." And whereas autism is a bio-neurological development disability that impacts areas of social interaction, communication skills, and cognitive function, and whereas according to the CDC, one in every 36 children in the United States are diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder, that's ASD, with boys being affected four times more often than girls. Whereas autism has now become the fastest-growing developmental disorder, yet the least understood and funded. And whereas while there is no cure for autism, the effects of autism may be treatable with early intervention, with the greatest successes found in communities that spread awareness, promote acceptance, and demonstrate inclusion in everyday life. And now therefore be it resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim the month of April as Autism Acceptance Month, and we call upon all citizens to celebrate differences by learning the signs, symptoms, and realities of autism, and extending acceptance and inclusion in your communities by encouraging others in the same. Done in open court this the 18th day of April, 2023, upon a motion by the Chair, second by Commissioner Mitchell. All right, we'll go ahead and accept some comments from.
Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Hi, my name is Courtney Carey, and I'm one of the administrators at Denton County MHMR that, that works with individuals that have been diagnosed with autism. The contribution that these citizens make to our society and to us individually is beyond measure. Each day, we are grateful to support, guide, and care for these remarkable humans. Texas is the second-largest state in both population and size, but unfortunately, we rank about 45th when it comes to funding programs that support individuals with autism and other intellectual and developmental disabilities. In government, Governor Abbott's recent proclamation on autism awareness, he stated that we should therefore do everything within our power to ensure that people with autism are fully integrated into their communities, and I believe that this is a call to us in Denton County to look for ways within our power to ensure our neighbors with autism are included and empowered to reach their highest potential. So, thank you for your willingness to raise awareness and to help erase stigma surrounding all diagnosis, especially autism.
Thank you, thank you. Did you have any other comments? You're good, Kelly. Diane McKelly, okay, all right.
Thank you so much.
Well, well, I would just like to, one of the reasons we do these proclamations is so that we can disseminate this, you know, a lot of people watch our meetings, and we were able to send out the pictures and links to this, to this meeting, but more importantly, to links to resources, and I think it's very important that we do these things, and the court believes that as well, that we acknowledge these special months, because it's a way to communicate to the public that you're not alone, that you're not dealing with this issue just within your family, and that there's resources out there. And I think the fact that you're not alone and just having to deal with this issue on an individual basis, or as a family unit, dealing with it, but, but that there are agencies out there, and that's our MHMR, and there's other people that are a phone friend who want to help ease the burden, and give you relief, and give you resources, and, and, and have skills and abilities, and a heart of compassion to help people achieve their, their best life and their best self. And so, I think that's very important, that people realize that, again, you're not alone, and that there's a whole community to support and embrace you, and, and help you realize your dreams, and many times, provide relief to families, you know, depending on, on where an individual is on the spectrum, that can be a very different experience, right? For, for, for those loved ones who want to support that individual and care for that individual, but that can be very difficult at times. And so, I, I think it's important for people to, to know to pick up the phone, reach out, and we love you, and we're here for you. We want to help be a connector of resources for, for the, the families. So, I think that's just very important, it's just a key part of why we're doing this, Pam, you know, the, not only acceptance, which we're celebrating, but also awareness. I think that, that those two things are, go hand in hand, acceptance and awareness, but really starts with awareness first. So, anyway, all right, any other comments? We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Why don't y'all all come down here? We got a big crowd, which is good. They're aware. And why don't we all stand here, I think, because we got a big, we got a big crowd so deep. Cheryl, give that.
This is my tall friend.
This is my friend, Katie.
Oh, I can see, I can see.
Oh, we're going to look up, okay. Oh, she snuck up there! There she is!
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate you coming. Thank you for your service.
All right. Let's go to item 14A. 14A, Michelle, if you or Tom.
Yeah, come up and talk to us about that.
Make a visit about this, let's go to 14A, this is approval of the Statement of Work Agreement between Denton County, Texas and Charisoft Technology Corporation, and approval of the Security Obligations Terms Agreement between Denton County, Texas and Five and Nine Incorporated for the purchase of the Five and Nine Studio Development through the Texas Department of Information Resources Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number DIRTSO4288 in amount of $142,631.44, with funding in the amount of $92,631.44 to come from Tax Office Line Item 0166614030, and funding in the amount of $50,000 to come from the Tax Assessor Collector VIT Fund 013204, as recommended by Michelle French, our Denton County Tax Assessor Collector. Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
We're doing great. Do you want to?
Good.
Do you want to give an overview of this program, this new technology?
Sure, I'll give you kind of the 30,000-foot view, and then Tom can certainly fill in some of the more getting into the weeds part.
Sure.
What this is, we are super excited about it. This is something that we have been looking for, for several years now, something like this. And as a matter of fact, in the fiscal '23 budget, it, this was, the concept of this was actually approved as something that we could go out and, and purchase. And so, once, once the October came, and we started working with purchasing to start looking at various companies that were out there, this is a company that rose to the top. What this basically is, is it's an intelligent virtual assistant that helps with answering phones. What that means is that when customers call in, they will be able, as we get the program up and running and get the knowledge base built up, they will be able to receive assistance from the program, just like they would be receiving them, the assistance from us. But what this does is it will allow us to be able to let this program kind of answer phone calls, very frequently asked questions, direct them to proper offices, such as the Appraisal District, or maybe other county departments, and provides information that is your normal routine information that you get, that you, you, that we give every day. It will be in, in a format that is, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but it won't sound like this robotic voice, it's actually going to sound like you're talking to a person. And what this will do is it will allow, allow us to be able to provide assistance, I mean, able to answer the phones, while we're also able to redirect some of our staff members that currently work in our processing department, and answer the phone, be able to allow us to redirect, to be able to, you know, whether it be working on the front counter, or helping with web dealer, or special duties, any number of things. It'll help us to kind of build some efficiencies into our operation that will allow us to redirect some of our staff members to, to help in addition to the phone. Now, with that being said, if there is a situation where a customer, as they are working through the program, if there is still additional information that they're requiring, we are more than happy to help them. They will then be able to get into the phone system and talk to a live person. There are certain questions that are more complex, they just are. A, a lot of times with dealings with, with motor vehicle-related questions, especially titling, how do you title a vehicle, what do I need, things like that, there is very little that we can actually assist a person over the phone with, because every situation is different. And so, in, in a situation like that, they would be able to talk to a live person, a customer would be able to talk to a live person, and we'd be able to direct them accordingly. What this system will also do is provide the, the means to send a customer SMS text messaging, and eventually be able to interface with our emails, so that a person calls in, and after the, the various questions that come up, oh, you need to speak to the Appraisal District. Well, then, this system can direct them directly to the Appraisal District, it can send them an SMS text message, giving them information. Same thing with motor vehicle-related items, if someone needs to renew their registration, you want to do this online, okay, well, let me, you know, we can send this to you, we can SMS, you know, we can mess, we can send, send a text message to you to provide you this information. So, it's a, it will be a great tool. You know, as we all know, with staffing resources, it's kind of hard these days, and I think everyone feels, feels the pinch. We, we have a phenomenal staff, but in serving a county of a million people, there's a whole lot more out there than what is in here. And so, anything that we can do to help not only our customers, to help, you know, direct them efficiently and effectively and quickly, give them the information that we can, while also enabling our staff to be able to do the jobs that they've been hired to do, and that they are, are providing the public service for. In serving a county of almost a million in population, anything that we can do to help both of those, both of those fronts is something we're very interested in. help both of those, both of those fronts is something we're very interested in. So we're super excited about being able to do this. I hope that you all see the benefit and, you know, approve this today. It's an important tool in our arsenal to be able to assist our public.
Perfect, good. All right. I believe Commissioner Mitchell has a question and then I have some comments.
Michelle, I've got a question. So this system, the citizen that called in, they will never talk to a person unless they request it, so they get the system first and you don't answer the phone, none of the employees answer the phone unless somebody says, "I want to talk to her."
So that's a good question and I appreciate you asking. What we don't want is the misconception that we're never going to talk to people on the phone. We're going to, all day, every day, we're still going to talk to people.
Every day?
Well, every day that we're at work. Now, what, and I'm going to double back to that, Judge, in just a second.
Because I don't think that's-
You guys are really helping me because I've got talking points. So what we're going to do, say you call in and you're wanting to know about the evaluation of your home.
Okay.
That automated system is going to identify that we are not the best person to answer you and get you the information you need. So it's going to provide you, that is, a better question for the Denton Central Appraisal District. Would you like their information? If you want it emailed to you, it'll email you. If you want it, like she said, the SMS, text it, it will text it to you. We have not spoken with them about a direct send yet, but that would be a future capability if that's something they wanted. We wouldn't want to force it on them. So, yes, so when we get those questions out of the queue, we're answering our questions. And those people that, that need to talk to a human being in our office are going to get to a human being in our office. And it is my belief that once the system's up and working and we can fine tune the questions it asks and the answers it gives, we will talk to more people than we do now about tax office information. To get back to your point, Judge, right now when we're not there, if we are closed, it's a holiday, a weather day, they get nothing, they get, our office is closed. This AI now will still answer as many questions as it can. Now, there'll be some that it can't, and it'll still give remedies. Do you want to email? Do you want to do this? Property questions, it'll route to property email, motor vehicle to motor vehicle email. So we'll still be able to help those people more than we currently are because right now they just get, we're closed, call back. And it is my hope, and I haven't seen it, and I, and there's no way to really get numbers, it's my hope that that too will cut down on the number of calls we're getting all day, every day, because people are going to be able to get answers on some level in non-traditional hours.
I guess my concern is I hate talking to a computer-
Sure.
-when I need service.
Sure.
And so, if I call in and I'm asking, you know, my taxes are due tomorrow, can I pay them today or whatever, and I want to talk to a human being, can I talk to a human being?
So, in that scenario, it's going to give you two options. It's going to say, would you like to pay online right now?
Right.
And it's going to take you right there. Or would you like to a human? And then it'll get you right to-
A human being?
Yes.
We, we are not cutting out the ability to assist our customers in person.
Okay.
We are trying to, to build inefficiencies to the way in which we assist customers on the phone and to be able to directly route our customers to the information that they need quickly and efficiently. But we are in no way cutting out the ability to talk to our, our phone staff. They will still have the opportunity to do that. And it's my hope, we haven't, you know, obviously, we've got to get in and, you know, start working with this, but it's my hope that the process that we currently have, which is on Wednesdays, we shut phones off entirely because we just simply have so much work that we, we've got to give up somewhere. It's my hope that, once we get this up and running, we won't have to do that any longer.
Judge, Commissioner Williams.
I have to say, I cannot stand talking to a computer. I did it yesterday through my credit card company and it asked me 14 times before it would finally send me to a person. So I can tell you I will absolutely not be in favor of that, but what I do love is that when we're not in the office or when you're not available, to have someone that answers, an opportunity for someone to call in and at least get the service. I think that that's something that we should do. We should be able to service our customers 24/7, no matter what the situation is. But when we're open for our normal hours, I would, I would not be in favor of having a computer answer the phone. I understand your situation with employees, I totally get that, but that's just not something I can, personally, that I think is white for our citizens. But I, the light went off when you said, when you're not available, when you're not there. That's something that I absolutely would be able to support, but it would have to be written like I just said, so, if that makes sense. Where we're answering the phone personally when we're there, eight to five or eight to four or whatever our hours of open operation is. So, yeah, I, I just, unfortunately, service, everything is going to that and I don't think we need to hold off as absolute long as we possibly can-
Right.
-as a county to serve our citizens properly.
Commissioner, that's in.
Go ahead. No, I've had my time, I'll come back. You go.
Commissioner Williams, I totally understand what you're saying and I agree and get frustrated sometimes with punch one for this, punch two for that, but I don't think that that's a bad thing if, for some of the calls, for example, I bet a lot of the calls you get are, what are your hours? Are you open at the Southwest Courthouse today? Is it closed in Louisville? And those kinds of questions can easily be answered this way. What I wanted to ask was, have you all seen this in action in any other counties already that you might have some ideas?
It is our understanding that we would be the first county to have this particular service.
So are we getting a big discount for being there, Guinea pig?
Compared to the going rate, because we use such a small piece of this company's pie, we are considerably getting discounted rate than, than others. What I want to say, on both say, there are many people, myself included, I really don't want to talk to a machine. It is our hope that this hybrid, where, and we had some conversations earlier with Technology Services, had a representative in the meetings too, because they are going to use an actual human's voice, it's going to be less caustic, it's going to be less push one for this, push two for that, it's going to be more conversational, it's going to walk people into what they want to do. And if what they really want to do is talk to a human, they're going to get one. And, and quick as possible. If it's somebody else, because we do have a generation now that doesn't want to talk to a human being at all, ever.
Right, called teenagers.
It's going to get those people the information they want on their phones so they can make things happen right away. We're hoping this hybrid serves both of those customers better and then by default allows our experts, our persons that, that know the stuff, to get more of the conversations that they need to be able to help people with and less of the directional, the hours. A large number over the, especially the last three years of our phone calls are for the Central Appraisal District. And we, it's not that we don't want to help them, we cannot, we don't have the access to the information. So we're hoping to get those people where they need to be and then help them by getting more they need and, and help ours by getting them on the phone and answering the hard questions.
Well, speaking of CAD, I think rather than sending the, the information on how to reach CAD, let's work on getting a direct link so that if you, if you need to talk about your house appraisal, we're going to connect you with them now.
Right, we just don't want to force that on them. We are going to try to work that out with them.
Okay.
And in other words, we have not talked to the appraisal district yet about, you know, being able to do that, but that is something that we would love to be able to do that, to assist the customers, to reduce just one more, one more phone call, to just be able to, to direct them. So that would be something that we would work with them on to, to make sure that we do that properly.
Okay.
And that would be true for county departments too, because we do get calls for the county clerk's office wanting to know passport information or, or one of the JP's. So we would, same thing, and, and we don't want to force it on anybody, but if they are willing for it, that's obviously the best route is to get it directly there and provide that opportunity. Now, we're going to provide the phone number to people, that's going to be in the email, in the text message, so they can call, but until we talk nice with people, we don't want to just force those calls.
Okay.
Did you hear something to say?
Yeah, just a question too. So, more on the actual, the way this works, it sounds like it's got some AI technology, is it? But is it the kind of thing where it's a little more conversational or is it the one where it's like punch one, punch two, or?
It is definitely more conversational.
Okay.
And then, what we will have at the end of the day, end of the week, end of the month, we'll get a summary that says the AI answered, and they give it a name, so whatever name we give it, answered these questions this way. Is that how you want them answered? And we get the opportunity to streamline that message and tailor that message. And then we'll also be able to see what people are calling, what they're asking, what people are wanting. And if it's something where somebody really does need to get to certain things on a human being faster, then we can, it's, because it's learning, the system through us, we can tailor the system to what our public needs.
And I would echo what you've heard elsewhere is that I, I too can't stand talking to them, but, but I also realize I'm not everybody and my daughters, I think, would be like, I don't want to talk to a human, right? So, but a couple of things is that if you, I've been in the situation, Commissioner Williams, where you almost can't get, like, you have to be able to say, "I need a representative" 18 times before it'll actually send you.
Get one.
This is one where it'd be much quicker to direct, because like me, I know, I've already done all the research and there's no stock, stock answers, right?
Right.
I need to talk to somebody because it's weird.
Right.
And so, I'm not going to have to do all of that. And then, when, what is our, when you are calling in today, are we, are we having, how long is the time to actually get, and would it be a callback type thing?
Well, right now, we're on the Cisco ICD queue. So currently, when a person calls in, they get into the queue and they're not able to talk to a person. You know, there's, there's a, you know, and there's an automated attendant that says, you know, welcome to Denton County and, you know, did you know that you can do blah, blah, blah? And it's just a, it's just a recorded, it's recorder.
Right.
Recording is all it is. So it can take some time. I think we have our, our queue set for a 10-minute time so that if someone has been, is, is trying to get into the queue and we have more than, you know, more than the allotted number of phone calls that are sitting in the queue right now, they just get nothing. It will disconnect or it will, you know, they're just, they're, they're not, not able to, to get into the queue. They have to call back at a later time. And so with this system, it would allow us to be able to provide information immediately before they even get into a kind of queue. Currently, when our, our clerks answer the phones, we have four people, is it four or six people?
Four, six, just depending on the-
Yeah, depending upon the day, how many people we have that day. We have four people that are answering the phones all day long, plus they are, you know, registering, renewing registration, or they're also processing specialized duties, or they're trying to do web dealer transactions. So our, our staff right now are trying to wear, you know, about four different hats at the same time that they're answering the phones.
So, so will this system allow you, like, when you need to talk to the representative and there is a 30-minute queue, will it say, would you like a callback and that, can you do that kind of thing? Because that's so much better than having to sit there for everything.
That is an absolute ability that we can build into it. We can have callbacks, we can have email conversations, anything that that person on the other end requests, we can build that in.
And then, kind of on that other piece where there are people that are not like me, that don't like to be on the phone, do we have some ability to do text chatting and that kind of thing or is that something in the future?
It is in the system. We probably want to grow the system up a little bit before we enable that, but it is certainly a capability.
The, the thing that I don't want is a additional chat bot to where our clerks are on the phone, plus also they're chatting. A lot of the systems that we looked at, a lot of the, a lot of the offerings that are out there, that's more of what it is, is, you know, you're, you're chatting, you know, instead of actually talking. And so I really didn't want that for our staff because I, I think that that could be just a little bit, they're, they're already multitasking a lot. I don't want to add something more to it, you know? And one of the benefits of this too, that we see, is that as we are training this program and as it's building its knowledge base, that information stays there. Whereas if we have a staff member who decides to go on to something else, we've got to hire someone and we've got to restart that training all over again. Whereas with this, that information's there, it's not going anywhere. We can just build it, we can change it if we want to, but we can build it up, we can increase it, and that information stays there, there's not that retention issue that, or retraining issue that we, we all run into oftentimes in all of our departments.
Got it, thank you.
I called Michelle yesterday at the end of the day. I had a full day, I tried to call her earlier and I just, they got away from me, but I wanted to ask her questions about this so I could kind of sleep on it and think about it. And I just have a tough time supporting this one. I do, and I, I told Michelle that, and I, I, I support all the, the good efforts Michelle has done to attract and retain employees and it's, but it's a tough, it's a very tough work environment to attract people to work for the county, and many of the positions in the tax office is one of those. And I, I, I feel your pain, Michelle, and, and I, I want to help you. And maybe I'm just old fashioned, but I really want to maintain a high level of customer service where people can get through and, and talk to people and not, not, and not be intercepted by a telephone, an operator that's a computer. I think that's a, that's a difficulty. And I was looking at your website this morning and y'all only answer the phones Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, nine to three.
Correct.
And not Wednesday. So y'all are only answering the phone 24 of 40 business hours. Is that a true statement?
Yes, that is. And as, as y'all know, again, it goes back to, we have got an enormous amount of workload that our staff is responsible to conduct, and that's the only way that we're able to do that.
Yeah.
That's, that's the only way.
Well, that's why we've, we've given y'all more positions. And so I, I, I really commend y'all's efforts to, to do something new and innovative. And you know what? If you're only, people might want to talk to a computer person, I mean, a computer, if the phone's only being answered 24 of the 40 business hours, that might actually be a service improvement, you know? I mean, so-
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understood. Say-
If you can only get through the Denton County Tax Office 24 of the 40 business hours-
Correct.
-it might be an improvement-
Right.
-to talk to, because our, our phone rings because they can't get through to y'all?
Mm-hmm.
I know other, other people ring to get, I mean-
Sure.
And I'm not trying to micromanage the operations of another elected official, but I'm saying, the tax office, as you well know, Michelle, after 40 years of doing it, it touches everybody. Everybody seems to go through there. You know, they may never even know who their county commissioner is or the county judge or the constable. They know who the, they, they interact with your office. They, they know the tax office. So I think we, we have to be very keenly aware of that, that that's, that's a high traffic, as y'all well know, that's a high traffic area, but-
It is.
And I, I just want to reiterate to you, Judge, this plan is not to make us not talk to people. It's, it's to help us help the people that actually want to talk to us and get the people that want to talk to someone else where they need to be.
And I will talk to you offline about that.
Judge, can I make-
I'm not going to talk about it in public.
Can I make a, a suggestion on this? Let's not just say nay today, but let's table this so we can have those offline conversations, Judge?
Yes.
I think that would be the thing to do because there's a lot more questions that we have about this, this system. So instead of just saying no today-
Yeah, I would, right.
Are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, I would love to find a, a win-win.
Okay.
You know, that's when I, that's why I called Michelle to say, walk me through this, because I know that you've had difficulties in the staffing.
Yes.
I, I get that. I mean, all of our conversations for years have been about that.
Yeah.
And you're, you're trying to do the very best that, that you can with, with the group that you have. I mean, I, I, I'm not criticizing that.
I, I understand that.
And that this is a byproduct of you trying to maximize efficiencies, right?
Absolutely is.
I mean, so, I mean, I'm with you on that, but-
And, and I appreciate that, Judge, because we do, we have a phenomenal staff. There's just a lot of work.
Right.
And what we are trying to do is to help our staff be able to do their job-
Correct.
-to be able to- To be able to, you know, build in efficiencies to where they can do their job, but also to be able to help our customers. And, you know, this is something that we have been looking at. The concept is something that we've been looking at for, what, three years, I guess?
Yes.
And this is a situation where the concept of this was approved in the budget, and we've spent a lot of time and effort. And I, I, I welcome all of your questions, and I'm, I would rather you table it, so you can ask those questions, than to say no.
Yeah.
But my office really needs a, a tool to be able to continue to assist our customers. And y'all know I'm all about technology, and I'm, I'm like y'all too. I do not like to, to call and have to answer, you know, have, have a computer answer.
You're looking for that zero button, where's this?
It drives me nuts, too. That is why we believe that this particular tool is, is, as Tom called it, kind of a hybrid, where it's not just that robotic voice, you know? It's not just press one here, press two there, do you want this? It's not that sort of situation. We would be the first, it's our understanding, as Tom said, we would be the first tax office in Texas to use that, which frankly, I'd be very proud of being able to lead the way. Y'all know I, I, I am all about, what can we do to, to not only assist our customers and our, and our staff, but kind of lead the way, you know? And so I'm very proud of that. And so I, I.
I don't have a fear factor of being the first.
Yeah.
I, I don't.
No, no.
But I have other concerns, I want to make sure that we could.
Okay.
Judge, could I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
I understand the concerns that have been expressed, and I share some of those. Is there any way we can hear a demonstration of how this will sound to the customer on the other end? I think that would be helpful in making up our decision.
So there were some early demos that, that we had sent over. Those have since been deleted on their system for size, but we can get you a new one. We, we can get one put together for you.
Well, is this up and running in, it's somewhere, right? I mean.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
I mean, they're a Fortune 500 company, they're everywhere.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we even know what one of those are, so we can just call and pretend we have a question with all-state insurance, or whatever it is.
Right, right, oh, that's a good point.
Get Diane's credit card number and.
Yeah, that's right.
I think we could, I would move that we table this today, for today.
Judge, I've just got one more thing.
Yes, go right ahead.
I apologize. First off, I apologize to you for, when I read this, I, I obviously didn't understand exactly what we were going to be discussing. And, and I'm usually very thorough, and, and I, I would have called you and, and had a discussion. So I apologize that I didn't give you that opportunity, so we would both be on the same page today. I, I think there's a, there's a happy medium somewhere, we just have to find that, because I'm all about helping out people when we're not available, that's for sure. And I, I know that even when you are available, sometimes it takes a long time to get through, which is just as frustrating for our citizens. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure, I apologize to you for, for not taking the time and obviously not understanding what this is going to be about, so. But thank you for coming up and answering our questions.
That's, that's no worries at all, Commissioner, you know, we welcome the questions, that's what this process is for.
Yes, ma'am.
It's, you know, this is something new, and it's something that is, is kind of on the bleeding edge, you know? Which I'm not, not concerned about that.
I understand.
I just want to do the best for my team and give them the best tools and as many tools as I can possibly give them to be able to provide the public service that we want to provide. And I do believe that this is one of those tools.
So I second the table.
All right, all right, we'll table the motion, we'll table that.
We'll table it, get back with you, Michelle.
All right, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let me go back, I got any other, let me go back, try to get.
Do we have to vote on that? Do we vote on the table?
We're just going to just pull.
We'll just pull it.
I just pulled it, we just pulled it, it's fine.
We don't have to vote on the table.
We don't have to vote on the table. Okay, let's go to 4A. I believe we have the Snyder's waiting patiently for us. Hello, you've seen a lot this morning.
Sorry.
Sorry, this is a public hearing, let's go to item 4A, this is a public hearing on April the 18th, 2023, to review, discuss, and consider the approval of the REPAT for Pecan Valley. This is lots 10R2 in Block A, and this is 3.202 acres located in Commissioner Precinct 1. And do we have a motion to open a public hearing by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, we, we are in our public hearing, is there, there is a loud, am I the only one who's hearing the?
No, it's, it's gone now. There was some major feedback.
All right. Do we have, do we have anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the approval of the REPAT for Pecan Valley? Anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the application for the REPAT?
Move to close?
Hearing none, we have a motion to close a public hearing by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have a motion by Commissioner Williams to approve the REPAT, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all for being here today.
Thank you.
They're like, that was fast. All right, well, congratulations on your REPAT. All right, let's go back to the, to item 2 on the agenda, our consent agenda members, are there any items you'd like to pull, or is there a motion for approval as presented? We have a motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, our consent agenda today consists of item 2A, which is approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item 2B is approval of the interdepartmental transfers. Item 2C is approval of budget memory request 101180 for Public Health Clinical to transfer $2,500 from vaccines to technology software services to pay for a new license for Credible Minds and any appropriate action. Item 2D is approval of the road superintendent report for the month of March 2023, and this is presented for recording purposes only. Let's go down to our auditor, number, item 5A, approval of the bill report payments from CSUD Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT Interest, NDA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. Go right ahead, sir. Do we have any, is it, the, the bill report? Is there any additions or deletions to the bill report?
No, I'm, I apologize, Judge.
It's okay, no problem.
On behalf of Jeff, may I recommend approval of the bill, bill report with no changes?
As presented, okay, perfect, good, thank you, you did very good with that. All right, we have a, do we have a motion to approve the bill report as presented? Move by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next is item 5B, approval, a pay request in the amount of $603,676.39 associated with the inter-local agreement between Denton County and the North Texas Tollway Authority, executed on the February 5th, 2013, for the Dallas North Tollway Extension 4B Project and County Commissioner Precinct Number 1.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6A, approval of specifications and authority to advertise for RFP 23-2738, Denton County's Records Preservation and Restoration and Appointment of an Evaluation Committee to include Stacy Trantham, Recording Manager of the County Clerk, Lisa Cox, Chief Deputy to the District Clerk, Tom Reese, Department Manager, Tax Assessor Collector, and Mark Manning, Records Preservation Manager, Records Management and Any Appropriate Action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6B, approval of award of ITB 23-2753 printer supplies for election supply carriers, the ESCs to Bob Brooks Computer Sales as primary vendor in the estimated amount of $216,436 and Micrologic Systems Incorporated as secondary vendor. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, under Budget is 7A, approval of budget memory request 101190 for judicial purchases to transfer $41,845 from Technology Software Services to Technology Capital to cover the cost of a three-dimensional scanner and software to capture accurate views of crime scene evidence and any appropriate action.
May approval?
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7B, approval of budget memory request 101200 for the Justice Management Division to transfer $46,575 from salary assistance to overtime cash option outside the budget amendment and Human Resources overtime policy as recommended by the Budget Office to cover a shortage in the overtime line item. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 7C, approval of budget memory request 101210 for the Sheriff's Office Communications Division to transfer $30,375 from salary assistance to overtime cash option outside of the budget amendment and Human Resources overtime policy as recommended by the Budget Office to cover the shortage in overtime line item and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7D, approval of budget memory request 101220 to increase revenue and allocate expenditures for the fiscal year 2023 for the U.S. Department of Justice Drug Court grant amount of $166,666 and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 8A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only, Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Community Senators, good morning. We have two new hires in the county clerk, one promotion in the district attorney's office, one new hired in JP 1, one demotion in JP 3, two new hires in UNA probation, one promotion in UNA probation, one new hired in private court number 1, one rehired in the sheriff's office, and two new hires in the sheriff's office. That's it for this one.
Thank you, Gustavo. Next is item 9A, approval of a renewal award for contract HHS 00131120007 between the Texas Department of State Health Services in Denton County in amount of $481,489 for the fiscal year 2023, public health emergency preparedness and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, but there's no action on 13A. Let's go to 13B, approval of United Way of Denton County Incorporated funding request to fulfill the allocation of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-19. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 13C, approval of continuing education hours for fiscal year, I mean, for 2022 for Commissioner Ryan Williams as required by Article 81.002.5 of the Texas Government Code and any appropriate action, a chair move for approval? Second by Commissioner Mitchell, any discussion?
I just, I just say I'm really proud of Commissioner Williams.
And he, you're proud of, I'm proud of him, too. Yes, he did.
Did you get?
I'm so smart now. So educated now.
Was that the full 16 that you got?
Uh, yeah, I have a few more than that.
Did we vote? All in favor, say aye, I'm cutting this off. Any, any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we, we're not going to, there'll be no, let's go to executive session.
Judge?
Yes.
14A, since we had a motion in a second, do you need to vote to table?
I don't think we, did we, okay, all, let's go back to 14A, we will vote on the motion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you, John. I will say this, we'll go ahead and do, we'll go to executive session. Yes, let's go to community updates, thank you, 17, let's go to community updates, Commissioner Williams, do you have any updates?
Nothing for me, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, we've got quite a few things with, with spring here, I'll just make the highlights. So in Carrollton, there's a shredding event on April 22nd.
What?
Yeah, you get to shred your documents for free.
Yeah, I know, shred.
I need to.
Exercise, I was like, I know, I'm not doing it.
Shredding up.
Shredding.
And then related to that, April 22nd, Earth Day, also a big celebration. And then CPR class in Spanish on the 25th in Corinth, Fairview Park Community Build, building a playscape there on April 22nd in the morning. Crossroads is having a spring cleanup on April 22nd in the morning to get rid of all the trash and all that, help pick up that. Then in Frisco, they're having music in the chamber on the 21st in the evening at 8:00 PM. And Little Elm is doing a, a, a spring cleaning green as well, and they're doing that on the 22nd in the morning. And then Shady Shores is doing the same thing, a cleaning event on that same day, the 22nd in the morning. So lots of places you can go help clean up. And then finally, in the Colony, there's a kid chase, not quite sure what all that really means, but, you know, it seems like I chase my grandkids a lot, but it's actually a race on the morning of the 22nd. And then a springtime tour of Bridges Cemetery that morning as well, that's all.
Perfect, good, thank you, Commissioner Mitchell.
In addition to Corinth, I don't know if you announced it, that they're doing on April 22nd, come out and build a new playscape in the community?
Yes, that's the, that's that, community build, playscape.
Okay, okay, in Flower Mound, we have the farmer's market every, every Sunday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We also have a spring trash off and recycling drop-off on the 29th in Flower Mound on Peters Colony Road. We have a kid fish, April 29th at Lake Forest Park, at Brutus, at Lake Forest Boulevard, at Brutus Park in Flower Mound. Holland Village, we have another one of those, those paper shredding day, Judge.
Yeah, thank you.
On the 29th, 2 to 5:00 PM. Lake Dallas, a citywide cleanup, April 22nd, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the city park. In Louisville, we have the Color Palooza on April 27th, 22nd, 10:00 AM to 5:00. And as I announced last week, the free vision screening, April 24th, 10:00 AM to 12:00. Please make yourself available for that if you need your eyes checked at the public library. I also want to say on May 6th, we're having another cleanup at the Macedonia Historical Cemetery. These cleanups are organized by Jackie Shaw, the Westside Baptist Church, and the citizens in the community to clean this Black Historical Cemetery. We had one in, on Martin Luther King Day, where we went down and I had a lot of participation, volunteers, Judge was there to clean up trash. We're having another one, it's going to be a little smaller one, on May 6th, from 9:00 to 12:00. Please govern yourself accordingly.
Thank you, we, we have a long, rich history of cleaning up cemeteries in this county.
Thank you, Judge. First of all, let me remind again about the Medal of Honor motorcade, which is going, in fact, I think Paul's waiting at the back maybe to tell us a little bit more about that. May I, Judge?
Yes, please. Yes, that's great.
Yes, the motorcade will be passing through the I-35 all the way up to Gainesville, and the.
35W, right?
It, it'll actually be on the, yeah, the 35, actually, it's the 35E over by Horny Toed Restaurant. We always set up right there on the 380 overpass. We have the Vietnam Veterans of America that'll be there. We have a whole selection, the fire department sets up right there as well, so if that's the place you want to be. Last year, it came through about 5:30. It all depends on the last Medal of Honor recipient that actually gets to the airport when they start progressing. We stay in tune with the fire department, they pretty much know when they're actually going to be there. So the expectation, they're going to set up at 3:30. They've been there as early as 3:30, but as late as 5:30, so it's kind of a window. But we'll set up and be prepared there, and just want to let everybody know.
Well, when it starts rolling, I believe, you know, Don could put something on Facebook that says, we're, we're, it's rolling to the letter.
Well, and don't they have about 500 other vehicles ahead of the motorcade?
It's going to be the largest motorcade of the event for any time they've had this Medal of Honor program. And of course, the parade is held right there in Gainesville, and that starts at 10 o'clock on Saturday.
May I suggest y'all bring your American flags to wave as these, as these heroes go by?
Thank you.
In addition to that, Denton is having its Red Bud Festival on the 29th, 10 to 2. And then in Justin, if you'd like to have coffee, coffee with a cop, you don't have to be stopped and get a ticket. You just go to the, it addresses 415 North College Avenue between 9:00 and 10:00 and meet some of the local police force. Then evenings on Oak Street is taking place in Rowan Oak, and that's the 20th of April through June 22nd, those Thursday evenings. We have a free musical concert each week. In Trophy Club, there is a community-wide garage sale, and after that is a community cleanup.